I'm Maury Pete's King, serving Rockville since 1972. Dine in, carry out, or drive up window. Come and see us. Thank you, Rockville, for 50 years of business.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, everybody got their minutes from the 7/21, the 8/04 meetings? Is there any?
Make a motion to approve it. It's written.
On favor? Okay. Claims and warrants. End of month, July, $39,850.52. August 18th meeting, $218,845.25. Payroll warrant for 8/28, or 7/28, 8/04, 8/11, 8/18, took an amount of $36,936.74. Get a motion to approve those.
Y'all make that a motion to approve the claims and warrants.
Second.
On favor? Okay, we've got the bank reconciliation for the end of month. Uh, July, utilities, $2,966,533.75. The town, $947,552.58. Payroll, $2,920.55. And customer deposits, $34,855.
I'll make a motion.
Second. On favor? We got a water sewer adjustment request for account number 10145. It's Charlie Jones, uh, for September, uh, kind of first 2022 billing. And all the paperwork's been turned in and so forth. Move to approve that.
Move to accept the adjustment.
Second. On favor? Okay, we have with us tonight Christopher O'Brien, Park County EMA, 911 Director. About the hazards mitigation program.
Yeah, the county's gonna, every five or so years, the county redoes its hazard mitigation claim, which is, uh, we look at the hazards that the counties face, environmental, natural type hazards, floods, tornadoes. We look at, um, you know, we rank order those, look at the threat, we do a risk analysis, come up with areas that we can work on it, and then we, uh, talk about different mitigation programs that we would have, or that we could go after, um, to do this. This, uh, to complete this report and this plan allows the county to go after certain, not only the county, but the six different incorporated towns, to go after different grants that both the state and the federal government have. It also keeps us in compliance with some of the aspects of the flood insurance program. Since it's a multi-jurisdiction plan, I would like Monizuma, if they could provide a representative to be on the planning team. The planning team's gonna meet four, maybe five times for about an hour apiece over the next year as we, uh, develop a public outreach strategy, collect some data, um, and then we're gonna, I'm gonna write a plan, and then put that plan out for public comment. And, um, hoping for this representative to do is, one, is to provide some information about what their jurisdictions see as hazards, and then any ideas or plans that they may have for mitigation that we'd want to incorporate into that plan. Also, provide, you know, you don't want one person writing some big plan, so they will provide some guardrails and some oversight and understanding.
Do you know when these meetings will be?
The first meeting is gonna be on the September 13th, and then from there, the next meeting is probably gonna be several months away. We gotta do a lot of work. But, um, September 13th will be the first meeting, and then we would work on it from there. The planning team's only, the planning team would be, you know, six, seven, probably less than, I think I have nine people on it, so we could figure out the best time to meet. And if you could just get me that name by the 31st, I will send that person, if I can get their email address, I'll send that person some information, and, um, we can just start the process.
We got anybody on the board that's interested in doing that?
Does it have to be a board?
It doesn't have to be anyone on the board. It could be anybody that you guys want to represent your town on the thing.
So John said skip ball.
Really the type of stuff I do now.
Okay, we'll get your name.
All right. Hey, thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, let's go around. John.
I wasn't ready, you went out and worked. We've had 45 calls in the last four weeks. Uh, today Scott and I met, he rode around with me for hour and a half, two hours, we looked at properties, uh, we both agreed that one that needs to be on the radar really quick is that 634 Ida trailer that's owned by Jack Simpson. And then we talked about some other ones, he made touch on that when you get in. You should have two applications for your review, uh, one of them being TJ, the guy that was here last week, and just to clarify, that is a reserve officer volunteer, uh, non-paid position, so, uh, with the other one being Randy. And I did some figuring today, depending on what your decision is, how you wanna handle that, uh, we've got about 780 hours available in our part-time fund from today. Got 19 pay periods left, so if my Rockville math is right, we, about 41 hours a week average for the rest of the year would deplete that fund, so as long as we stay under 41 hours regardless of what happens, uh, it will require no additional appropriations if that's...
No, it would just require revision to the ordinance because it states no more than it 20 accumulated per week, but that was actually for the whole year.
And that may be, that may be the...
It would just need revised, right Scott?
I think so, yeah, I think we could put cap on it.
The way, however you guys, I mean, that's...
That's the appropriations that are left.
The salary one that said not to accumulate more than 20.
So if it's 20, then we're way good, if that's the way we decide to do it, if we do it. I was looking at our budget today, uh, basically, all of our major operating expenses, we still have greater than 50% unexpendited balance, so I don't foresee anything for the rest of the year that's going to require additional appropriation. The only exception might be utilities, uh, I think we might be all right there, but that was the only one that caught my attention, so. And I think that's pretty much all I have for you. Uh, the town guys did clean up behind the office, it was forgiven, so, uh, I don't, is that dirt gonna stay, that, what's the plan? The neighbor was asking me if that was available for use, or if, well, to us, I don't know, public. The guy that lives right there behind him was asking me today.
Let's go ahead and talk about Randy now and be done with it. What John's talking about, Randy Nealon has resigned from the Rockville Police Department, and he's wanting to keep his credentials up and work here part-time to help us out, so. John's already told me she's gone completely abstinent, so.
My recommendation, as you read probably in the email that I sent, would, uh, you know, with his experience with ordinances, that would be my initial recommendation, is that we, you know, we, he can take calls as necessary while he's doing that, if that's what we decide to do, but I would like for him to focus on some of that. Me and Scott talked about that earlier today also.
Well, in my email, I said I was totally for him to, to do it. Only thing, I don't want us to have John go out and pick seven or 10 pieces of property and bring it to us, and then we sat on it and do nothing with it. We gotta figure out where the money's gonna come from to, to help clean it up, or enforce the ordinance, and that's only a concern because we wasted our money if we don't. Yeah, so, so, yeah, I'm all for it to...
And Randy may very well have some ideas about that too. He's had a lot of experience being, being the head hunch over there. As far as I know, he's a man of excellent character, and, uh, I've known him for a while, so I have no problem with it all.
I'll make the motion when you get it.
I'll, I'll make the motion that we, um, put Randy on as part-time to help take care of ordinances and any other things we find to do.
Now, from my perspective, uh, I want, I would like for you guys to lay out how you want that to look as far as, you know, hours-wise, and if we're doing ordinance stuff. And you don't have to make that decision today, I mean, we can just put him on and talk about it if that's what you wanna do, but I just wanna make sure we're on the same page.
He's got to tell us.
Okay, I have a motion to make it happen. We did get that. Second. On favor? Aye.
So on a part-time basis, is that what you're saying?
And we'll have to get and work out the detail.
Yeah, that's fine. And we'll just pay him out of the part-time fund, is that my understanding of it all, just so I'm clear and we're clear?
And right now, it's limited to 20 hours a week, now that can change. We have to, but we probably need to do some looking at the numbers, so you, in case you want us to try and stretch that after this year.
Yep.
Because the same amount of money might not be available.
And that's, yeah, I mean, that's why...
And that's at the $22 per hour as...
I didn't know if that was one of those funds that accumulated, or if it just got dumped back to June, or that was my...
It accumulates on its own, but it doesn't replenish sometimes as fast as what you spend.
Okay.
That's what I was trying to explain to you yesterday after my budget workshop. If you spend every single thing within your budget...
And we don't.
We're funded next year for what we've asked for, but if we spend everything this year, and then you turn around and spend everything next year, then 2024 may have to be cut way down.
Okay, and I understand that. I just wasn't sure if that was across the board, or, like, the part-time fund, I, like, I don't ever see a balance, like, I see what's left in it this year, but I don't know, you see what I'm saying, does that make sense?
I can show you sometime, John, too. I mean, it's, it's a little confusing, but I know it's...
So that's, I guess that's why I'm saying, you guys tell me how you wanna do it, and I'll staff it, how about that?
We'll just have to get together some time and get our thoughts down on paper and get with you and...
Part-time as of now, at 22 per hour, just like the other reserves, right?
I think that's everything I've got on my list.
Do you need more yea? Broden, the next line?
Me?
Oh, okay. I do have one other.
Yeah, I made the motion, he said, I just...
I think we all agreed on TJ in the last meeting, but I don't remember the motion. He did officially turn in his application, I, I don't know if she...
Yeah, we did, yeah.
He cleared all the...
Yeah, yeah. But we approved the money for his schooling.
Say what?
Yeah, we approved the money for his schooling. Yeah, whatever it was, and, yeah, that's all taken care of.
I'm good, thank you.
Yep.
Nine runs for the month so far, so, now we had zero the last meeting, so we kind of bolstered that to 109 for the year. Insurance came by and looked at 535 today at Far House, uh, so there is quite a bit of damage, a lot of wrinkling underneath, uh, they wanted to get it up on a lift, have somebody else take a look at it. He did take a bunch of pictures, uh, this was the first text I got. Didn't say yea, nay, or whatever, just gonna send it back to the experts, let them look at it, see what happens, and then go from there. Uh, second email I got from him was a little later on, um, so basically, the next step's gonna be to complete their appraisal, uh, probably in the next week, and then they'll send that back to EMC, and then it'll be in their ball, in their court until they determine what the status will be, whether it's repairable, non-repairable, floating down the river, I don't know, so, we're kinda in a waiting game until they get back to us, so...
So you say probably within a week?
Yeah, that's what, that was his estimation, probably is sometime in the next week, so... So, I don't know, we're in, we're in the holding game, as I get more information, I'm trying to keep you guys up on the emails, so...
Thank you, appreciate it.
Continue, Mr. Green.
Brad?
I just wanna thank Paul for helping with spraying at the community center here, campground, walking trails, and then, uh, I don't know if anybody remembers the Christmas tree at Washington in Wilkerson. I think it might be a good idea if we can try to maybe bring it back, it's just an idea. I know that one lot's for sale.
I think Jay's the oldest still.
Oh, sorry.
I just thought it'd be something different.
Oh, right.
We have had a call from someone that is, they pretty much talk like they're gonna buy that lot.
From Florida. Where they took the tree.
I went and put the tree.
Don't, no, I'm not like...
Gotcha.
It's just an idea, I just thought it's gonna be...
Be beat out of that.
Something different.
He kissed, cause I, she turned circles around a little, didn't he?
But that's all I have.
And you're welcome on the spraying.
I really appreciate it.
Jim?
Uh, I'm here to see about my time or anything. Was my time when I was off, is that excused time, or do I gotta pay that back, or how was that?
I don't remember how that was, yeah. Need help out there?
Well, he was paid for it, but it was time missed. And that's how, in the past, we've always counted it. That's what I showed you at my seventh meeting.
So it was excused time, but it was chargeable absence, so...
So what I, I gotta ask, as being on the board, I thought that's why we took him from hourly to salary, so he wouldn't have to pay back any time or anything?
It was still countable time. I remember that.
I'm totally confused. You said payback, I guess, I'm not, what do you mean, payback? Like, write a check to the town, payback?
No, uh, he hasn't got any time on his, I'm just here for moral support for Jim. He doesn't have any vacation or sick time or anything on his check right now, and his anniversary date was June.
June 25th.
The office manager, Jim told me, she told him he hadn't paid the time back.
Jimmy, you'd never talk to me about your time. You'd not come in and ask one, no? You'd come in and ask Tasha and Candy, but you'd never one time ask me about it.
You're the one that told me that.
That's why I brought it up.
You were the one that told me you had to ask him, and I've not heard nothing since then.
No.
Yeah?
That's why I brought it up at the meeting, because it's actually their decision, not mine.
Well, I just, I've been with it ever since then, that's why I'm here.
I've been told to.
Yeah, I thought it, it was a full pay, you kept track of the time, and you had to, as you accumulated time, that come off the books. That's, that was my understanding.
When did we discuss that, cause I don't remember discussing anything like that when we, when we took him from hourly to salary, about him having to pay back any time or whatever. And then, uh, he wasn't supposed to be on call, but he's being called out now, and he's not in, he's not charging for that time, so I, I don't, there's two different standards, you know, I'm not understanding some of them.
What do you remember?
I'm trying to remember how we worded it when we changed him from hourly to salary, so that he could have the time off while he was sick to keep, make sure it was covered. Um, I'm trying to remember how we worded it, though. Did I write it down? I can't remember exactly, that's what I'm trying to think of before we...
I can speak to this a little bit from a fairly, there's a law called Fair Labor Standards, FLSA, that discusses how a salary person, deductions can be made. So if a salary person is, works any part of the day, they're entitled to be paid for that day. So if you come in for an hour, and you have to leave, you get paid for a whole day. But if you miss a whole day, and you do not have any accrued time, then that can be taken out of your salary for that week.
Okay.
So sal, just 'cause you have a salary, it's, let's say it's 400 or 500 dollars a week, just for simplicity, and 500 bucks a day, and if you, if you come in on Monday and work for an hour and have to leave, you still get paid 100 bucks for Monday.
Okay.
But Tuesday, you miss. Well, Tuesday doesn't say you got a vacation day, so okay, well, you still get, you still get your 100 bucks for that day, but Wednesday comes, and you don't come in at all, but you used up your last day, then you, you're not legally entitled to be paid for that day. Now, whether you get paid, I mean, that doesn't, legally entitled doesn't necessarily mean the same thing as, as entitled, as, as what the town wants to do. So, when you exhausted all your sick and vacation time, you kinda went into a hole, right?
Right.
And, and so, I think that the question is, is the town, you know, gonna make you earn back that hole, and backfill that hole, so to speak, or, okay, that's the question. And I, I honestly don't, I, I can't, as I sit here, I don't know that we really got into that depth, the primary focus was on trying to make sure you could maintain a, a steady pay...
Right.
While you couldn't be here. And, and I don't know how many days you, you know, totally missed versus days you, I know, cause I know some days you came in and worked a little bit as you felt like it, so I don't know.
I don't think, I think, like you said, I don't think we actually broke it down how it all would work out in the end, when we did that.
Yeah, I don't either.
I don't think it was ever broke completely down to understand, cause we didn't know how much time would be worked, and how much time would be off, because we didn't know how you would feel after everything, your treatments, just everything.
Right.
So I don't, I don't think we actually solidly said, this is how it's absolutely gonna be handled. I don't think we ever, like, had a main, way it was set, how it was gonna be taken apart.
Yeah, we were worried about getting him out, getting him back, period.
So what, I'm speaking, what about his anniversary date then? So with that time that he, for his vacation and sick time and stuff like that, so that was taken to pay for the days that he missed?
For he missed, yeah, cause that's what they...
Yeah.
Why, why didn't you tell him that then?
Why didn't he ask me, Dean? I have copies, he could've asked for a copy, he could've asked me.
You know, as I said, we, all we was worried about was getting Jimmy back, getting Jimmy healthy and get him back.
I understand that, I understand that right now, but he's been back to work, and...
Why didn't you ask me, Jimmy? I already told you.
It didn't come up to his anniversary.
You said that was something you had to ask Ken.
Well, we talked about it at a meeting.
And I did, on the July 7th meeting, and it was voted, and that's what I was told to do, and that's what I...
No, I thought we talked about it.
We talked about it last meeting, and she came to us with the hours.
We had to ask, did he give you copies?
But I thought it was entirely... Is he now not?
He just needs to know, Ben.
Are you?
Yeah.
Okay, so, quick question. I thought it also was saying you were possibly retiring, you were retiring in October, are you not, or is that still...
Well, I'm still shooting for that, but it ain't official yet until I hear back from it, cause I'm doing it online, and it is slow.
Okay, so, part of that was the, what do you guys call it, your anniversary date, is that what you call it, with your annual?
Yeah.
Um, part of that, I thought we discussed, since that was the plan coming up, you wouldn't be here for the full year, which you earned that time for your next coming year, am I correct? Is that how, like, when I start the school year, I get so many sick days for that year, but if I wasn't, if I was gonna retire in October, my sick days would have been limited, so I would've had them taken back. So, we put you on salary to cover all of that, so then, as a, as a board, we voted to use some of those back, cause I thought you were still scheduled tentatively for October to retire.
And I am, but it might lead into November, I ain't sure yet.
Okay. And see, I didn't know how long that process would be to take.
Hell, it might lead to December, right? They're slower than hell, so I don't know, we'll see.
So does that make sense?
Well, we had talked about it at a meeting or two ago, wasn't it? And so, you know, just to keep it consistent, that, that would go towards that time, that's...
Well, I didn't really know, but it's a mess.
But, but, but you're not saying that if you end your, if you end up retiring whenever that is, and you're still in the hole or something, that like you have to pay money back or anything like that?
It's just like that.
Yeah.
There should be, I don't know how close it'd be, cause I had time when I come into it, and then I run out of my time, and then you guys give me time, and now I've accumulated time again, so I, I really don't know how all that...
Cause I had time when I come into, and then I run out of my time, and then you guys give me time, and now I've accumulated time again, so I, I really don't know how all that.
It falls into play where I'm at there. It can be real bad, but I don't know.
I don't know either.
You want, there's your copy. I didn't know if we were gonna discuss it here, or. One copies for twenty one, the others for this year, twenty two.
So you got the timeline, huh?
That's where it started.
That's what I, yeah.
So maybe if you hired this area, we didn't have to revise him that. He still got paid for everything.
He still left.
Yeah, no, I, yeah. That, that, that may be, yeah, that, that should not count as any time, those little minimum charges. So he might be closer than that. But these days are rough. It's the smallest that we have, so.
That's where he come back. Cause his salary doesn't get comped over time, but like with any salary person, we trade with one hour. For one hour, one straight hour. That he could buy a sword, or a, or.
I see, okay, oh, oh, gotcha, I got you, he's over here, I got you.
Yeah, so that shows, like, he earned that.
So on, on the anniversary date, there's a negative six eighteen. Time earned is two twenty six point six. Actual time, and taking a hundred and sixty one hours since, is that correct? Am I, am I reading that right?
Where you add, Jim?
On the, uh, page with, uh, twenty two, it started out negative.
Right over six hundred and eighteen point six one from two thousand twenty one, December.
And then he's earned two hundred and twenty six.
Well, so I just explained into Scott, on that time earned, because his salary don't get overtime or comp time, but we've always in the past traded hour for hour. So that's what that column is. And at the bottom, where you said to charge that on June twenty fifth, it shows him earning it, but it also shows him actual time taken.
So what this says, he got five hundred and fifty three point six nine hours still in the negative as of today.
We, this, I'd have to go through this a little bit more closely than Kathy, but I think it's still negative, but I don't know how negative it is. Uh, there, because there's a few days where it looks like Jim maybe worked part of the day, to me, uh, cause he took like two oh six off. Those really could be, he should get paid as a, as a salary. Well, and, and that doesn't count as time. So some of these, these partial times over here might need to be taken off, so. I think it's still gonna be counted, I mean, I I don't think it's five hundred hours, but there might be thirty hours or something.
So let us go back, Jimmy, and redo these hours, and then we'll deal with you.
Yeah, sounds good. But hopefully he doesn't have, if he does retire in October, he doesn't have to pay.
No, no, there won't be any pay. No, there's no pay. No, it's just wiped out, but when he retired, but to be able to count for all the hours.
Well, the one, but you might pay it back.
No. Dean? Okay. Paul Klineau. Candy has been talking to Rockville. They do accept furniture and dumpsters, but not tires, TVs, computers, et cetera. They do have the talks away day, except for Saturday, the seventeenth at Fairbound, where these types can be, trees for certain things, that's the county's done. And there's a flyer in the papers. Do we wanna set a date for the cleanup?
Well, I think we should, if we're, if we're not on, on this violations.
How about the tenth, which would be the Saturday week prior to the, their talks away day over there?
Yeah.
Give me our, our stuff then, we can take the rest of it off.
Seventeenth is the daylight to dusk show.
Around here, yeah.
I mean, that's the homecoming and the.
Yeah, so the tenth would be a good.
Tenth?
Prior to that, yeah.
If we get, if we get some flyers made up, there's some properties I'll hand deliver them to.
Well, I think we need to, I think we need to put this flyer out also, so that, I don't know how, I mean, I hadn't heard about this in accounting.
We'll, we'll post that one and ours together, and that way they can see they can take that stuff.
That's a good plan.
So the tenth, is that good with you, Brad, and your crew? Same times as spring?
Is that nine AM and four?
Nine though, dumpster.
Nine to four, until full?
Nine.
Or did you wanna go ten?
Nine to one.
Nine until full, so like, nine to one or until full? Is that what you're asking? Nine until full? You might be there till Monday, if it went like this spring.
I won't be.
I would put nine to one until full, that way regardless of.
Nine to one or until full?
I mean, if they're full before that, then.
September tenth.
And I don't know what this first word is and the next one.
Would I do have a typo?
Yeah.
Oh, I think it's opioid.
It's opioid, I know what it is.
I have a hard time saying that.
Opiate is what I, the E.
There's a settlement letter from the attorney general, general.
That's all I got.
Dear, dear. Dear, dear.
At this I turn it out, um, from another site, that a potato sent out, it's from Montezuma, but I can't eat.
But you're missing the second page.
I am? What was that?
He told you how much. I've, I've seen the other place, yeah, I thought you just didn't count it. Yeah.
I was kinda looking down here, laughing, zero, zero.
I, I saw two other ones, and they had a second, cause I thought, well, work, and I thought maybe yours had it, so.
This may be a little restricted.
It's not.
If you have, if you get less than a thousand, then the state, like, just keeps it. Well, I know that sounds bad, but, but you, some of it's restricted and can only be used for treatment programs or something. If you're, and, and that thousand is spread out over fifteen years.
Oh goodness.
So, if you're getting a hundred dollars a year, you can't, what kind of treatment, I mean, you can go buy some, um, you know, matches or something, I don't know, but, um, so the state will just keep that money, and then they're gonna have, they, you know, try and have programs that are statewide and stuff like that. There's a separate pool of money that you're getting, that is unrestricted and be used for anything. But again, it's, it's, it's in the, it will be in the hundreds of dollars a year, I expect. Maybe a little bit more, but I'm trying to judge it between, like, Dana, Dana was getting like a hundred and eighty five dollars a year. Clinton's getting like, I don't remember, eighteen hundred, but, but you're somewhere in between there, I suspect. So I don't know how they calculate it. It's based on population and stuff, but it's not gonna be a whole lot, but I, I'm, I'm pretty sure there's a second page. Oh, oh, she's got the number.
Oh, that's fine.
Okay, we'll see how close I look.
Well, these have in the mail, and then I just probably not realizing.
Back in the breakdown of more, I was like, why are you not seeing?
So you're gonna get, you're gonna get twelve hundred dollars a year, and, uh, you're gonna, you're gonna get, the first year, there's like an extra bonus payment, because they've been accumulating the money. So you're gonna get twelve hundred dollars unrestricted this year, and you're gonna get two hundred and twenty seven dollars a year after that, for a total of fourteen thousand dollars over however many years that is. And then the restricted payments, you're under the threshold, you're gonna get, the first year, you get twenty nine hundred, and after that, it's five hundred and thirty. So I, I, I think that will kick in, you won't really get that, it'll just go to the state.
Yeah, they said it would disperse it to the counties. The county instead of the city.
This first year, you're gonna get this much, and then every year after that, it's two hundred and twenty seven dollars, which will buy, you know, a tank of gas or something, but for the, not for the fire threat, but.
And then the restricted, you'll get a some, but then the rest of it goes.
The thing that I don't know, if you're under the, cause that first year, you're over a thousand.
Yeah.
But.
It says asterical there, the second year, and if you look over here, it says, if it's under a thousand in a single calendar year, distribute, um, or directed to the county instead of city or town.
Oh, it's the county, that's.
It says county.
Okay.
All that letter.
I mis, I, I misremembered that, or misread it.
So. I couldn't figure out why they said, I'm looking at it, and I'm like, why don't they have it?
Yeah, I sort of saw it, I was like, where's the other page?
So I can copy them back and add to this page, thank you.
You're welcome.
I'll see that you get it back.
Okay. USVI, I need to sign?
Yes. Just a form that said you support the public awareness safety program for our gash utility.
So I'll need a motion to do that. Sign up.
I need a motion, Scott.
I'll make a motion for you to.
Sign the letter.
Sign the public awareness.
I'll second.
My favorite. Thank you. Okay, now we've got the estimate from, uh, HWC on our community crossings money.
Once we get our new copy, or all, we'd copy all this, because the colored prints easier to read. I haven't got it yet. You're still anxiously. It won't print in color or anything else, it's gonna.
So do we need to go ahead and sign this this evening, or?
Yes, this is just saying we agree to the match money for the project, the ni, the project's a nine hundred and ninety seven thousand, two fifty seven, and our, we're committing a match of two hundred and forty nine thousand, three fourteen twenty five. And this is just telling them that we do have the funds for the match.
So do we need to make a motion for that, or rearing?
I was writing that myself, I'm sorry.
A motion for that.
Or did we already need a day to move forward?
Oh, the paving, yeah, you should, you should do that, and then authorize Jay to sign that one.
Yes, let's all council members have a sign.
So we make a motion to the match of the.
Yeah, yes.
Okay.
Six.
Yes.
Yes, yes, yes. And then once he receives that from me, a signed copy, he'll send it off and submit our application. And hopefully we'll get approved.
Okay, Liberty Mutual, the fire department workman company, is needing an answer, whether we want them to pursue recovery of the state farm insurance, family line mortgage insurance. The expenditures on the claims from Skip and Shaw are recoverable expenses.
I'm out.
Yeah.
I'm out.
I think we already talked about, about doing that, didn't we?
Did you give me a definite answer?
I thought so.
Yeah, we were leaving that, I think we.
I read the, yes.
I think we did, it's in the.
Anyway, if, yeah, I mean, it's.
I know we talked about it, and I think they made a motion.
Maybe we didn't.
Well, I don't think you need, uh.
You don't need a motion.
Well, I mean.
That's why I brought it up with you. Here it goes.
She can't. And it's hard to part with later, you can't.
So I move we, uh, file to, uh, recover the, the funds.
Okay, yeah, cause that was for the truck to file with our insurance.
Oh, okay.
Well, again, it's, and then in turn try and collect all our monies.
Yeah, from the state farm, but that's on the B hook. This is the, this is the work comp.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, this is the work comp.
Okay, but it's just Rex and I, just, so, I mean, it's.
As that works.
I mean, there's no reason not to go after it.
Worst thing says no.
Should we vote, maybe we go after Diana?
Really have any work comp.
Well, I know, but. I mean, it's between the insurance companies and they're gonna have.
Speaker of the House, you, you can't vote. Speaker of the House, uh, in case the vice president's sick or something.
Well, you, you, I mean, you can't, you, you don't have enough people to vote. If they don't vote, I mean, you're not, I know you feel like you can explain, it, it doesn't affect what you're getting, Sean, out of this in any way.
I'm getting nothing out of it.
It doesn't make any difference to what you're getting, Paul, you're not, you know, you're on the, I know you're on, you, you can't vote, it doesn't get any more money for the volunteer program. You can't vote on things that, you know, you couldn't vote.
I just didn't think I was able to say anything, because I'm already involved in that incident. That's why I was thinking I could.
You know, you're making the decision not as a town, because you don't, you, you, you're getting the same regardless of who's paying for it. So you don't gain anything financially from this decision, it's, you make, you'd be making it the town board member, but you still don't feel comfortable doing it, I'm not gonna, you know. Nobody's gonna make you vote, so.
So that means you can, you could have do all that, but, I mean, I could do.
Or if you wanna wait till you have the fifth.
Sorry, I guess, fair. I probably don't want to, but I think it's no brainer. Uh, we got our second ARP CLFR distribution on eight seventeen, in the amount of one hundred and eleven thousand, seven hundred and twenty seven dollars and seventeen cents. There's a little bit of. Uh, and we did get the application from Tyler Proussinger to be a reserve for John. You know, when he's going to school or anything.
It's whenever Kevickton hosts a class, they're gonna teach it, so.
That'd be good for him.
That was why we had to act on it fairly quick, we were gonna do it, because he can jump in with him.
That was why we had to act on it fairly quick, we were gonna do it, because he can jump in with him.
Okay, reach alert information is also in your packet. Definitely need a way of notifying customers that there's been a emergency, and for other pertinent information.
Townwide, yeah. Reach like a system. I'd be willing to make a motion to pursue that.
I'll second it.
On favor?
I think it'd be handy, it would be handy.
It will be handy.
Cause I didn't know about that, like, you know, the hydrants.
Yeah, we posted, yeah, see, post office, and then, some people don't do Facebook, so they gotta see the utility page.
I think it'd be a good way to get it out and make sure, I forgot, I remember we discussed it, but then I forgot.
Didn't know about, I didn't know about the boil advisory until it was over.
Oh, no.
Sorry, though, I'm gonna tunnel drink this water.
Okay, you got a copy of the Partnership Park County newsletter, um, is in your packet. One thing, uh, let me look at the date. What it is now, oh, it's the thirtieth of August at the Rich Theater. Alan Cobb and Chad Jenkins, they're gonna show a movie and have a talk, and they've been to both county high schools, and they're gonna talk about financial, financial responsibility for going to college, stay away from student loans if any way possible, but there's, uh, both, uh, both superintendents are involved in it. They handed out three hundred and fifty tickets, they're, to the total, there's gonna be popcorn and drinks provided, and, uh, a, a movie about financial aid and stuff, so.
Really good. A lot of people don't know.
Yeah.
But today, well, what's out there?
But that was something that, that those two guys come up with, and.
You think it's the thirtieth?
Uh-huh. It's, I think the door's open at six thirty, and the program starts at seven, but each student gets a mug or something in school, and.
That's what the parents, students and parents.
Each student got four tickets, that way they can bring parents or whoever.
Good idea.
Cause there's an article about it in the Rockville paper today, cause Mary Jo was there yesterday, so, but that's kind of a good deal.
Yeah.
Okay, Kathy, your budget workshop, if you'll, yes, you wanna tell us all about?
Yes, not really, because my brain's not put back together for the workshop, so, that's why I put on there for, um, September first meeting, I'll have copies and everything, pretty much. What I put in there is funded next year, but like we were trying to explain earlier, if we spend every part of our budgets this year, then next year will be funded, but if the same thing happens, then two thousand and twenty-four, we might have to bring some budgets down or do something different. So it's always a good idea towards the end of the year that, if you haven't had to use it, let it roll back over, am I saying that right?
Yeah, you.
Okay, it's like having a savings account, a no, your own personal savings account, it's there if you need it, but if you don't have to spend it, it'll be there in the future.
You maintain an operating balance of your funds.
Enough to be able to.
To carry, if, if you can keep, you know, a healthy balance, and you guys have healthy balances, you do, but.
Some of them are getting kind of.
You know, like your general fund this year so far, you've actually spent more than you brought, or you've, you brought in three thousand dollars more than you spent, which is good, but, um, you know, that's close, that's close. When, and that, that, that's enabled you to do things when things come up, cause you know things always come up, and this needs, it's those big ticket things that, that, when you need the money for it, so. That's something we can work through when we have a more detailed discussion about the budget, and, and trying to look out and project, um, some things with, with like the part-time position. You can certainly do that, but, but if you, if you spend a hundred percent of your budget every year, eventually, you will not be able to have as much. Cause you kind of budget in anticipation that you're not gonna spend it all, if that makes sense, and you leave, and you always have.
Don't work that way.
Something, something Kathy and I talked about, and something to consider, is like that public safety money, I haven't really touched it since I've been here to speak of, but it all goes into a pool, so the Fire Department can go buy a new fire truck with the money that I'm saving, so, I don't know if there's a little bit. I don't know if there's a way to, to break that down, or do I just let them rob me, but.
You'd get more people from the town marshal on the town.
Yeah.
Their stuff.
I mean, I'm kind, in the back of my head, I'm kind of saving it for vehicle replacement or something like that, I mean, that's, that's kind of my goal, but.
So are we.
And yours are more expensive.
Yes.
Yeah, that's, that's part of it.
Yeah.
That's all I have, something gets there.
You guys in the front row have anything for us? I didn't ask. Rex.
Don't really have much, I'd be willing to do the hazard mitigation plan if, uh, nobody else wants to grab it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Put me in the doctor for it.
Yeah. Yeah, you'll find out Chris is a little different.
So I got, I just wondered about the, uh, the Jefferson Street property, whether we'll get any closer to getting that, or condemning it, or whatever, the weeds are taller now than the fence.
Um, he'll be back here, run the restroom real quick, so.
We did, I'll touch on it, cause we stopped there, I love it today. He said that he could file on it tomorrow, but you could also be creative, uh, the tax sale. I'll let him elaborate more than that, I'll leave you guys. That was one of the big hitters today, so. Cause it's not getting any better.
No.
It's getting cut out to the road now. That's all I got.
Uh, I did talk to Charlie Jones, and he, when he gets all, everything together, he will be here to talk to us about the Home King Hotel and the theater. But what he had in mind was they're gonna gut the upstairs, and he wanted to try to set the dumpster on the sidewalk on the north end of the building, so they can just put a chute out and throw it in the dumpster.
Not on the front side.
Right. And then he said, but he will be here and explain it all when he gets there, but that's, that's what he was thinking, and I didn't get that from him the first time, but just to update.
I'm with Rex, it sounds better.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But when he gets more details and things going, he will be here to talk to us.
I just have a quick question for Brad. When you guys do the flushing of the hydrants, is that planned out earlier in the year in, in your guys' choice, or is that scheduled out by somebody else?
Uh, it's scheduled by us.
By you?
Cody does it.
Okay, so I had somebody make a comment, and I, cause I work for the school, she just mentioned.
It was bad timing.
Yeah.
We didn't realize that was the first day.
Yeah, that's why I was wondering, and she said, she said, do you know if that's scheduled out? I'm like, honestly, I'm not sure, that's why I was gonna ask you.
Yeah, we scheduled it, I think it was a week or two before, I think it was.
We had it in the paper and everything when we realized it was.
Then we didn't realize that was the first day.
It didn't dawn on her either until I asked her for something here, and she said, yeah, if you can fix the water tower and not have them, it was a joke in her email. So, um, that was one thing, and then, my other question is, if, okay, so how is it decided whose responsibility is, like, for a hornet's nest in a tree, but it's on the town side? How is this handled? Is this even handled by you guys, or would that be a property owner?
I would not know.
I don't know either.
Obviously, the town.
I'd say it'd be John's, and he can shoot it.
I'd leave it alone for November.
Well, I was thinking the same, if you can, wait for it to go, huh?
Where is this, like?
It's, I don't know the address, it's on Washington, it's, yeah, but it's on the town side of the.
We'll get it tomorrow.
Yeah.
North Washington.
Yes.
It's on. It's on Washington Fire Rose.
Good call.
Two thousand gallons of water.
Anyways, I didn't know how that was handled, I didn't know if it's ever been brought up or something like that, because I wouldn't have known.
The address is.
So, that was it for me, but I figured you guys already knew about that, but I, about the fire hydrants, the flushing and the tiny.
Normally, we don't do it this time of year, usually it's spring.
Usually, it's, yeah, so, okay, thank you, that's it for me.
Kathy?
The only other thing, well, I got a couple things actually, I jumped off for him. Um, we declared that, um, what do you call it? That you fixed, and we don't want.
Oh, the trencher?
Yes, they got it fixed and wanna keep it, and we declared it surplus, can we undeclare it surplus?
I was gonna ask you about, whether, I, I had a note, do a notice for you, and I don't know that I ever did, yeah.
No, cause they're still figuring out whether they wanna put a certain minimum bid amount and checking to see what's running.
It'd be nice to have, especially some primary and some water line that needs to go three to four foot, and those ones we rent from Ace only go eighteen inches, so that trencher we have at the shop may come in handy.
So undeclare.
It's a lot, but.
Either that or put a high price protection on it, you know.
I think we might break Anthony's heart, because he worked on it, and he goes out there and rides it.
I just think you gotta use for it, I wouldn't.
I'm thinking if we could use it, I.
Just remove, yeah, move it, remove it from the sale, if that's the pleasure of the.
We need a motion to move it out of the.
Surplus.
Surplus and put back into.
Off the surplus list.
Yeah, so, on favor?
Perfect.
Oh, uh, there was one other thing I had, excuse me.
And the only other thing that I had, I'll go ahead and finish, just. When we decided to hook up with IN.gov for internet services from to build our new website, and then maintenance, we agreed on a hundred dollars a month, twelve hundred per year, that only includes four support requests a month, and ten users, but the tricky part to this is, John and I have both went through that, it's called Squiz Matrix, that's where you're supposed to learn how to, for us to go in and change something ourselves, it's very, very, very difficult. And I was wondering if you would consider upping to the enterprise level? It is two hundred and fifty a month, but we get twenty support requests a month, which, that means when you got new news on a chili cook-off or the cover bridges thing, anything, they'll do it all for us.
The, when the lady came to the partnership meeting and talked about that, she said that's just almost a hundred percent of, of upping. Once you get used to it, it, everybody's holding up a notch in their recovery, so.
Well, I just, I mean, we both, do you agree it's very difficult?
I mean, sometimes my mind turns slow, and it's a little simple, but, uh, if you figured me and Kathy's hourly rate for an extra two hundred and fifty dollars a year, wouldn't take very long to eat that up, right?
Well, two hundred and fifty a month, instead of the one hundred a month, so it would be an extra one hundred and fifty, eighteen hundred.
So, yeah, she said that, that's pretty normal.
She did.
Yeah. I mean, if, well, if you don't understand all of it, and the more you get into it, the more you understand how much more help you need, and.
Yeah.
I think it's a cool marketing tool, too, cause they, they get you for anything, wow, this is really good to do, unless you get into it, wow, this is really hard.
Yeah.
Yeah, so they obviously.
Yeah, the thing is, that monthly cost can be split between the town, general, and all four utilities. It's up to you, but I thought I'd bring it up because I am not smarter than a fifth grader, and I don't believe I'd be able to split myself.
If you wanna utilize the website, we need to have people that know how to get in there and everything.
People that be together be smarter than a fifth grader.
I wouldn't be much help.
John, maybe it'll be a four and a half.
What do you think?
Make a motion.
I make a motion to go ahead and accept the two hundred and fifty a month.
Thank you very much.
One thing I did forget, are you done now, Kathy?
Yes, I believe so.
I'd like to have an executive meeting to talk about some personnel issues, and I'd like for you to be there if possible. Whenever we can set that up. I can go about anytime. You, it'd have to be after two thirty for you. You got any special times or dates, Rex?
No, my, I, I've got a floating, I told somebody I can go out of town one day next week to, to, to Cass County, uh, and I told him, just pick whatever day works best, and they're, they're waiting to hear back from the people up there we need to meet with, so, I don't, you know, I'd say go ahead and schedule, if it ends up that, that I, I can't be there, maybe I can zoom in, or, 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 maybe I'll be back, I don't know.
Okay, fine.
And I, I can be back by two, I mean, if that.
Yeah, and I'm gone.
Oh, they're gone, that's right.
Okay, so it has to be.
It has to be an evening then.
Evening, okay, I like it.
Or, four, you're back when?
Four thirty.
Four thirty.
I just wanna go into town.
You need to retire again.
I know, Thursday night's not, tell me that, man.
Well, if you can find weeks.
Thursday doesn't, I, I, my wife's got something I need to go to Thursday night, so.
I'm, whenever, I mean, it just have to be.
Next week?
We need to do it sooner rather than later.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, let me.
Or if the morning would work better, I could just take off a little bit in the morning, as long as I'm back there by eleven, I can do that, too.
I.
I, my game would go earlier on the twenty-sixth, I'll be back in town, it's on a Friday, like, three o'clock.
You just throw everybody out and do it right now?
You can't.
Forty-eight hours. I can't do Wednesday morning.
I mean, I, I have, if we did morning, I just need to be back there by eleven, so that's an option, too, just throwing that out there.
Well, I think about, do you, yeah, you drive twice a day, don't you?
Yeah, I can be back in town day three.
Okay, if that works out, and work out for you, that'd be.
What date you say?
We didn't say a day, I just said if it works out in the morning, I could make arrangements to do that, so you'd like a.
I'm good, any days, but next Thursday.
I don't know about, um, the new, your new member.
Up Sarah.
How about her?
Kind of, I think she could be, I think she could be flexible with notice, like, if she had enough, I think she could be flexible, so. But, gotta work on dates.
Yeah.
Soon, okay. Go back to Paul on, uh, Jefferson Street. You missed, he asked, you were in the restroom. Where we stand on that.
I haven't got it filed yet, I worked on it some more, but I didn't get it done yet, I'm sorry. Uh, I did, um, we went by there today, and, uh, it's not gotten any better, but. It is, I, I, Kathy alerted me to the fact that the newest attack sale properties has been published, and there's gonna be a commissioner's tax sale coming up. And so, I thought, well, maybe we should, cause it's in the, that, that, that property is in the tax sale, uh, eighteen hundred dollars in back taxes, I think nobody's gonna offer that for it, but, um, if nobody offers that, then there'd be a chance to go to the commissioners like we did last time, they give a certificate, we, then there, but then, two problems with that, one is last time we did this, you remember, or maybe you don't, and the, like, the day before their time ran out, they can't do it, right? Uh, secondly, I think it's so bad that I don't think you wanna wait that long, cause it would take six, nine months possibly, potentially, so, um, like, we just can't do it. And, and, and I intended to, it just hadn't got done yet, so. The, I did look, uh, I'm trying to, I'm gonna kind of go back through, it doesn't look like there's that many properties in town that are on the doing with tax lists.
It was small.
So, um, there was another one, I don't know, um, look in that one, it had quite a big bill, four thousand dollars, and most of the time, that, that tells me that it's been through multiple tax, probably been through a couple sales, Denton was the name.
The old Reader House.
Oh.
She passed away and.
Is that the green?
Yeah.
Is that the green one?
It's a big light.
Ah, that one, I know that one.
Yeah.
So that's one that.
With the fancy porch.
Yeah, there's a porch on it.
Used to be one of the most.
Oh, beautiful.
Nicest house in town, back in the day.
So, on the date for the executive. Is there?
I can't do Thursday evening or Tuesday morning, I think it was, and then I could, I, this other thing could come up and I have to go, so, I just don't know for sure if it'll be, they emailed me this afternoon and said they were still waiting to hear back from somebody about when I need to go out there, so. Otherwise, I mean, Wednesday, Tuesday, I'm sorry, Wednesday morning is a morning, I can't do it, Monday morning, Tuesday morning or evening, Monday, Tuesday, both, anytime.
See her get out of her.
I'm asking her if she's flexible next week.
Okay, and ask her when she gets her release.
She said Saturday.
Saturday, yeah.
So.
I was just trying to see how flexible her hours, her work, I think she's pretty flexible.
She'd been there since the place opened up, she ought to be.
I was just trying to see if she could tell me, so we could have an answer.
I hope she answers back pretty quick.
Depends, she probably.
Probably have to be Tuesday anyway, wouldn't it, because Monday.
Yeah, right.
Wouldn't be the forty-eight hours, right?
So, yeah. I guess we can go ahead and tentatively do it for Tuesday morning at nine, and then, unless we hear back from her, something different.
Yeah, I'll let you know if she, if she provides.
At nine, you said? I did forget to add to that, website bill, we should be up and running by the last day of the month, hopefully, if our online payment training goes good Monday, we should be up and running, Lottie.
Is that out on Wednesday, question mark, Wednesday's out, you said, right?
Yeah. Wait for your back, we can. Well, if you got that down, so we can go over during the meeting and figure that out.
So we done?
Are you getting any other stuff?
Not particularly, I'm sure.
Make a motion to adjourn?
I'll second, please.